Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 12th, 2025, meeting of the public or the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. We have a couple items on our public hearing agenda. The way the planning board works is we begin the meeting between 6:30 and 7:00 typically with a work session. We handle our tabled items and new and old business. If we finish that before 7:00 o'clock, we will move directly into the public hearing. If we don't finish that before 7:00, we'll pause that and move into the public hearing. Michelle, would you please take the role?
Certainly. Hetzke?
Hetzke, here.
Aiken?
Aiken, here.
Burton?
Burton, here.
Canauer?
Canauer, here.
Tidings?
Tidings, here.
Sangster?
Sangster, here.
Weisar?
Weisar, here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor, here.
Prinzing?
Prinzing, here.
Ferigno, here.
All right, we have minutes from our work session at the end of May. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. And can I entertain a motion to approve?
Tidings, approve.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, Doug, would you like to go through the tabled applications and other business?
All right, so we have one tabled application. It is the Chick-fil-A at 2051 Fairpoint Nine Mile Point Road. So no new information has been submitted to the planning board regarding this application, so no action is necessary by the board tonight.
Okay.
Then we have one new business item, the Eastside YMCA parking. So just to re-familiarize yourselves with this, the planning board approved the Early Learning Center addition to the YMCA back in 2024. The approval included 26 land bank parking spaces along the rear of the parking lot between the Early Learning Center and really the U of R section, the back section of the YMCA building. During early on into construction, they had approached the town for some temporary parking that was going to be used by staff along the cul-de-sac off of by the summer camp area as well as a few parking spaces off of what would be the road on the south side that leads to the dumpster enclosure and that for construction worker parking. They're coming back into the board to do a site plan modification to look at making those two areas permanent in trade of installing the land bank parking where it was approved on the west side of the parking lot where the garden is there. Overall, it's a net increase of seven spaces and a net increase in 350 square feet of impervious surface. The engineering department did ask for updated SWIP numbers for and updated drainage numbers just to ensure that the drainage facility could, like an alert for it.
Handle it?
Handle, yeah, the nominal amount of additional runoff.
Did it come back fine? That came back positive?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have any concerns.
Okay.
Steph has no concerns with the transition. So what you'd be doing tonight is memorializing that. So we would have them submit a new plan, site plan for signature showing the trade in the spaces, you know, giving up the land bank parking and in trade gaining the additional spaces. Their intent, from my understanding, is that the spaces at the bottom there on the loop road will be additional overflow employee parking and the parking off of the cul-de-sac will remain gravel and will be used seasonally for the summer camp for counselor, camp counselor parking and things like that. The applicant is in the audience if you do have any additional questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? It seems fairly straightforward to me.
Mike Skryt. Good.
Good, good. Okay. Somebody want to move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, Alex, I'll follow up tomorrow with next steps.
Okay. I believe that takes care of our new business and tabled items. Correct?
Correct, yep.
So as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we will move directly into the public hearing portion of the evening. Again, thank you all for coming. If you're unfamiliar with the way the process of the planning department and the planning board works here in Penfield, we have two applications this evening. If you would like to speak to regarding one of those applications, if you wouldn't mind, there's slips of paper in that blue bin at the table near the front door and that helps me kind of go through and know how many folks want to speak. And I will ask forgiveness right up front. If I butcher your name, the pronunciation of your name, please forgive me. And sort of a few housekeeping rules. If you can, please silence your phones. Applicant will please come up here to this table next to the staff and give their presentation. Once they're complete with their presentation, the board members will ask questions. Once we're done with our questions, we'll open it up for general public commentary. And if you are not here, if you're one of the millions watching on our streaming services and throughout the planet, you can call in at 585-340-8771 and our team of operators will put you in the call queue. And then if you would also alternatively, you have an opportunity to submit comments electronically and that's at the town website. It's at www.penfield.org and there should be a link to this meeting for your electronic submissions. So with that, oh, one other thing. When you come up to speak, please come to one of those two microphones here on your left, my right. Took me a minute there. And address your comments to the board, please. And we are keeping our comments to four minutes. I think we have a lot of people that would like to speak. So with that, Doug, please read our first application.
All right, application number one, Fisher Associates, 180 Charlotte Street, Rochester, New York, 14607, on behalf of Northrop Penfield Solar LLC. Request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval and a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of ground-mounted photovoltaic solar array system at 1234 and 1250 Northrop Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. The solar array will be interconnected with the RG&E utility grid. The property is now or formerly owned by Gary and Wendy Smith and zoned rural agricultural. Actually, scratch that. That is an error. It is zoned rural residential, one acre, RR1. Application number 25P-0005, SBL 110.01-1-80 and 095.03-1-40.003.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. We are just waiting for the presentation to load. My name is Ella DeMeo. I work with Greenspark Solar and I am here with.
Matt Vanderbrook, the Director of Origination at Greenspark Solar.
So we are excited to tell you about both our company and we are based locally, right out of downtown Rochester and work in the area.
Excuse me, can you pull that mic a little closer?
Yep, sorry.
Much better.
And so we are a local company based right out of downtown Rochester and I'm going to let Matt start the introduction while we continue to wait for the slides to load.
I can dance a little. Yeah, so Greenspark Solar, we're a 23-year-old company. We've been working in the renewable energy space for that entire time. I've been working in the solar industry since about 2011. As Ella mentioned, we're headquartered in downtown Rochester. We formerly were located in Wayne County but moved recently. We're about 130 employees these days and I think, you know, our approach to these projects is, you know, we're not only a solar developer, but we're also a contractor. We have engineering in-house. We build these projects, we maintain these projects, so we're sort of, you know, from beginning to end of the lifetime of these projects, we're involved. And as I mentioned, we're, you know, have been in business since 2002, so we've sort of been through all the ups and downs of the industry. Yeah, you can go to the next one. And this is just a little more information on Greenspark. You know, we've repeatedly been.
Do you mind if I pause you there for just one second? Those of you in the back, can you hear okay?
Not real well.
Not real well?
I'll get closer.
Brian, can you boost the volume? Do a mic check like a rock star or something.
Mic check, there you go. That's better.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, you know, we've, you know, we've been one of the fastest-growing companies in Rochester for a number of years and then we're also a B Corporation, which is we adhere to a triple bottom line, so we're focused on not only being a profitable company but also doing best, doing right by our employees, our community, our planet. And that's just been something that has been part of our company even before we were B Corporation, so it's a, you know, it's a very positive, supportive environment. And like I said, we've been very active in the industry for a long time, involved in a lot of policy discussions. And, yeah, excited to be here to discuss these projects with everyone.
All right, so let's get into the project. So I'm sorry if I'm jumping ahead, but just to let you know, because we did put it into one presentation, we actually have two projects in the town of Penfield that are interested in being developed. They've been in conversation both since before the solar moratorium was put into place and the first one is on Northrop Road. So just a little bit about the parcel is that it is actually on two parcels. It is 66.17 acres for both of the parcels and we plan on the facility would be approximately 19.22 acres. The equivalent number of homes powered by this would be 710 and that is based off of the EPA's greenhouse calculator and the information that we have to date on the proposed project. And so we are anticipating that we will have all regulatory approvals in about six to nine months from now, so before the end of this year. And then after that, after regulatory approvals, it will be about six or nine months before we'll start construction and then the site will be operational another six to nine months after that. So we're thinking in 2027, hoping. So you just saw the outline of the parcels and this is the outline of the array. So while the addresses are technically Northrop Road, the access to it will be from Plank Road to the north. This is a rendering of what we anticipate that the, that it will look like after being built. This is for illustrative purposes only and as you can see, we are planning on adding some screening around the south border of it and we're also planning on adding some screening over here around the north. We have recently talked to some of the neighbors and we're going to see if we can fit in some screening here because the existing trees that are here may be taken down. There's also a lot of natural screening already existing on the west portion near the development on Michael's Run and Ariana's Way. All right, so to look at the site plan, it's going to take a couple of pages because as you guys saw, it's a little bit spread out. So right now, there's a driveway here, but we're actually planning on shifting it over. It spans two parcels, so we're just going to shift it onto one and move that down.
So shifts east a little bit?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You would shift it east?
Shifted east, yeah.
Yeah, shift it east just a little bit. And this is where we will also interconnect to the existing utility. And so down here, as we said, there's some proposed plantings to help screen and then we'll continue to move down. As you go down, there's still screening existing over here and this is just taking you to the second part of the array. And then finally, at the southern end, we will also add additional screening down here. The screening that we're proposing is evergreen trees, conifer trees, to make sure that it's screened all 12 months of the year. All right, so we also had some visual renderings made just to try to give you an idea of what this will look like in your community. Again, these are for illustrative purposes. So we had taken some pictures from multiple different viewpoints around the site. And so from Plank Road, this is, like I said, where we would shift that driveway over a little bit and then, and also where the utility poles would be. Here, this is from Michael's Run, so as you can see with the natural screening, even with this picture being taken in February in the dead of winter, it's still not very This is from Ariana Way, also, you know, maybe a little bit visible back here, but with the additional screening and the topography, it won't really show from behind there.
So from second floor, from a second floor location, you're going to be looking more down on the array?
Yeah, what's the elevation of that?
This is from street level.
So laying on the ground, kind of?
Standing, yeah, yeah, five feet. I'm 5'4", so from about 5'4".
Didn't lay down to take that picture.
Yeah, so about five feet tall.
It would be helpful to see what that view would look like from second story.
Yeah, and may, you know, I don't know if anyone of the neighbors is interested, like obviously want to get permission to go into someone's house, but I think we'd be happy to do that.
I think, yeah, with the topography, you should be able to do that, you know, figure the vantage point if it was, you know, X number of feet up from the existing terrain and then looking down at whatever your elevation is for the array.
We might be able to get some drone photography to be able to do that. So these are, these are made from photos that were actually taken. These are the original photos on the left. We might be able to get some more drone photography to be able to do that. That was the first image that you saw was taken from drone photography, so I think we could probably figure something out.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can work on that. And then this is from Fairpoint Nine, or Fairpoint Nine Mile Point Road. I always feel like I say that wrong with the two points, but, in which there's so much shading, so that would be from this vantage point right over here. So, so much shading that that, that it's not visible at all. And then here, you can see right here a little bit, the evergrown trees. So this is estimated about five years post-construction. This is what it looks like today and this is what it would look like along Northrop Road. And here's another picture along Northrop Road from a viewpoint looking in diagonally. So right here, aimed this way and again with the screening, not very visible, but we could, we can look into seeing some more, just taking some more pictures of what it might look like at a second story.
Yeah, and just to mention, I mean, these are all taken in the winter because that's sort of the worst-case scenario, right? Like there's not, there's not leaves on the trees, so we just wanted to sort of present that, you know. If we're taking pictures after this, we'll, you know, they'll be in the summertime, so they might look a little bit different.
And then I'm going to skip right back, go a little farther. And so we want to talk a little bit about the Greenspark commitment and as Matt said, you know, we, that goes on the next slide. So let's talk about some of the things that we can do to help benefit the local economy. And so one, we're willing to provide training to any first responders to make sure they're familiar with the site, familiar with any actions to take on the site in the very rare case that there was an emergency. Also, we want to maintain as much existing natural screening that's there now and add any additional screening that is needed to help blend this into the community. Also with this, as we said, we're local, so we often partner with local community colleges and trade programs to get them on the site and teach them about this. So there's a lot of opportunity for local students. We've had elementary and high school students come in on field trips to explore some of our existing locations and there's also chances for apprenticeship and vocational training and employment opportunities. We always like to hire local when we can. It's also will be generating new recurring funding for the town and for the local school districts. And then with that, for this site, I already said that it can, that the power generated from this is equivalent to approximately 710 homes' energy used for one year. That would also be 372 million smartphones charged or equal to about 3,016 metric tons of carbon dioxide removed. And, oops, missing a slide. Oh, here we are. And so as Matt already mentioned, you know, Greenspark designs, develops, constructs the array. We're the long-term operator and maintenance provider, so we're going to be right here if there's a problem. Anybody is always welcome to call us, whether it's through construction or, you know, after the array is built. It should not be noisy. We are doing a noise analysis and a glint and glare analysis study. They aren't in yet, but if it was noisy for any reason, please call us because that means something's not working. And then on top of it, Greenspark commits contractually to return the land to pre-existing conditions at the end of the life of a project. The one exception to that is if we do build in a driveway and the owner would like to keep that, we'll, we'll keep those improvements if that's in the owner's best interest. So please feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions. We are always happy to talk and hear any thoughts or opinions that the town or the community members have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Bob, would you like to?
Sure.
Start off?
So is this a community solar project? Is it an IPP? What's the?
Community solar project.
Okay.
Yep.
So I know for this area, the Genesee load zone, there's not a lot of opportunities for community solar at this point in time?
Yep, yeah, so both of, both of the projects that we have, so we've gone through the full interconnection for all of these projects. We already have sort of the approvals from RG&E for these, so agree, yes.
Explain to those in the crowd what community solar is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Please.
So community solar is kind of a catch-all term for distributed solar projects, so these are projects that feed directly into the local distribution grid. There's, there's solar farms that are out there that are built on the utility scale and their sort of transmission level, whereas these are just focused, like we're tying directly into the utility poles right outside the property. And so the way it works in New York is all of these projects, the energy generation has to be assigned somewhere. It can't, it doesn't just go to the grid and then just, you know, kind of disappear. So we have to assign the energy generation from these projects to different entities. Sometimes they are commercial entities, sometimes they are, you know, we have projects with school districts, we have projects with Heritage Christian Services and home leasing where they're supplying their facilities that they own in RG&E territory. And then other projects are residential community solar. People can sign up, you know, it's been around for a number of years where people can just sign up to participate in these projects. And that is, you know, I don't think until you sort of get through the development phases of these projects, we don't know yet sort of how the, the energy is going to be allocated, but that's, you know, that's sort of the general structures of how these, how these work.
So would it be fair to say that if someone was interested in signing up for one of these particular sites, they could sign up?
Yep.
They, they would call you, RG&E?
Yeah, they would, they would call us. So there's a few different ways to do it, like there is, this probably is getting too weedy, but there's, it's sort of on customer billing, so you can actually, it's actually flows through the utility where you have these programs. You can sign up that way or you can sign up sort of through third parties. If people were interested, they could call us. As I mentioned, like we're not quite at that phase yet of this project, but when we get to that phase, you know, could sort of give that information to folks on how that, on how that works.
All right. I didn't mean to steal your thunder there.
Yeah, that was perfect. So of course, for if it, if it evolves to being a community solar for residential, there's built into that a 5% to 10% savings.
Correct, yep, yep.
On energy cost, the energy itself.
You got it.
So, you know, my thought is, being in Penfield, it's conceivable that people in Penfield could sign up and take advantage of the power generated.
Yeah, yep. So like, you know, I know there's at least one or two county projects in the town of Penfield, yes? Maybe one. Those projects are specifically for Monroe County Water Authority, so they're using all the electricity, so this is, this is certainly a different, different setup than, than they have.
Okay. I think on the one slide, you mentioned construction time would be six to nine months?
Yeah, it could be, it can be as low as, as low as five months, but as long as nine months depending on site conditions, on the weather, on, you know, all of the things that can change construction. So we like to say nine months just to give you the worst-case scenario.
And we're also sort of subject to, you know, this, as part of these projects, like we have to pay for utility upgrades to the substations and to the lines themselves and, you know, RG&E's timelines are, you know, RG&E's timelines and so they're not, they don't always align with as fast as we would like them to go, but, so that, that's certainly part of that timeline as well.
So at the end of construction, what do you anticipate the ground cover, the vegetation to be on the site?
Yeah, so we, we will reseed the entire site with a mixture. We're proposing a fuzz-and-buzz mixture, so it's a mixture of pollinators and clover, mostly clover and grasses, which all of this will then be reseeded with that except for the access road and the equipment pad. And then additionally, like I said, we will be doing evergreen trees. You didn't ask this question, but I'm going to preemptively answer it. So after construction, visits of the site will be approximately, you know, three or four times a year, mostly for maintenance, mowing, things like that, but after, after the site's constructed, it, the traffic to it is, is very, very low.
Okay. And could you describe the, the security around the site, you know, the infrastructure? If there's anything within the perimeter that's monitoring the operation of it?
Yep.
That sort of thing? If, if something was to penetrate the perimeter fence? Is it possible that for the height of the fence, have you ever had experiences where deer get inside the fence? You know, that sort of thing and how do you handle that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we have an eight-foot fence proposed here. I know we've done some things where we've elevated the bottom of the fence to let some animals in, but with deer, I mean, deer can jump pretty high fences. They jump into my backyard all the time. So, you know, to your point of monitoring and security, so we're sort of, these systems are constantly being monitored, right? If there's any sort of outages or anything, so we're made aware of them. You know, we don't generally have, you know, cameras on site, but I know some of our projects do have those if the town's requested them, so those are certainly things that we can do. I think as for access to the site, you know. I think as for access to the site, you know, if requested, we could put in sort of a gate to prevent anyone sort of from driving from the road down to the site, and then the entire array itself, right, is fenced in, and all the sort of major equipment is fenced in as well.
And here, just to further show, so, right now, at the north end of Long Plank Road, the existing driveway, as I said, we're gonna kind of be moving, shifting that over a little bit. So we definitely want to make sure that it's clean there, because both the landowner uses a maintenance shed that's up there, and also the neighbor is going to be using that access road to reach his horse pasture. So there's definitely gonna be at least a ways of the road that we do want to keep open for utility.
And if there was an issue inside, what's the, I guess, the protocol? What's the response time?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, like we said, like, we're close by. So, you know, if there's a, if there's an issue where, you know, something happens with a module, a module goes down, like, our response time is, obviously, it's not a huge rush, but if it's sort of more of an emergency situation, right, like, we're on-call, like, we have people available, usually, I would say it's within 24 hours, but in certain situations, it certainly can be more. So, again, these are sort of regularly monitored by our customer service division.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
I just got a couple. Do you have any of these similar anywhere else in Monroe County?
So we have, we have a fixed tilt, so this is a, the other project is a fixed tilt, right? This is a tracker project. I don't believe we have another tracker in Monroe County. You know, we have a, we have a project in Parma that was built a number of years ago. We have, you know, seven or eight projects in Wayne County. We're constructing a couple of projects in Henrietta as we speak. But, you know, certainly, we can provide a list of the projects that we've installed. We did not install the Monroe County one, but it is a similar, is a tracker project, which is similar to this one.
So, and what a tracker panel is compared to a fixed-tilt panel? As a tracker panel will move with the sun, to be able to capture the sun throughout the day as it rises and sets. So if the panels are set in that east-to-west rotation, the panel can track with the sun. If the panels are set in a north-south, then they stay fixed to point towards the south to get the maximum sun exposure.
And this whole area will be fenced in, whole property?
Yes, yeah. Perco, I mean, perco, right? I mean, that is part of the National Electric Code. We have to have these things fenced in, because, you know, there's...
What kind of fencing are we talking about?
What do we propose?
The...
Is that it?
Like egg fence, agricultural fence, yep.
I'd be happy to send you over pictures of what friends we propose.
We could see them.
Yeah. Agricultural fence, again, we've done both. Agricultural fence, we've always felt, sort of blends in a little bit better than just chain link, but, again, we're certainly flexible on what's required.
Is the project gonna require any variances?
No, this project should not require any variances.
And the roads are both incorrect right now, one on North Route and one on Plank? Are you gonna move the one on Plank over a little bit, two roads?
No, there's only gonna be one road for this project. There will be no access from North Route. There will only be access from Plank Road, and yes, in that, in the existing driveway that's there, we're shifting it to the east a little.
Okay. And you mentioned if there's a problem with something, it's monitored somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, so we have, you know, 24/7 monitoring of these systems of their production and sort of, you know, there's lots of different pieces of equipment, obviously, in the system, and they're all sort of monitored. And then, you know, if there's an issue, the data acquisition system that we use is sort of automatically notifying us of any issues that might arise.
And that takes place with downtown, your downtown offices?
Yes, yep.
And somebody would respond?
Yeah, and yeah, so we have, so we have, you know, we have a team, it's called our Customer Care Division, and that, their job is to just, they maintain all our projects as well as other projects all around the state.
Okay. Yeah, it's that right now. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I have a few questions, some of which I think you've answered. You mentioned 710 homes powered 24/7?
So that, so the EPA calculator, right, they're basically saying, like, you know, how much does this system produce over its lifetime of 25 years, right? And so it's, in every single year, it's powering the equivalent of 710 homes.
Right. So it's a calculator that's publicly available. I can definitely send you the link of EPA, and you just put in the statistics of the project, and it tells you information.
So you have giant charge controllers there that...
I mean, yeah.
There are structures on-site besides the panels that, battery storage?
No battery storage, no.
So it goes directly from the panels to the grid?
Yeah, so basically, there's pads which have transformers on them, and those transformers are, you know, increasing the voltage of the system, and then it's putting it out on to the grid from there, and then the electrons will do what they do, what they do from there.
So the panels themselves are at what voltage?
These ones are at 240.
So the panels themselves generate 240 volt?
Yeah, sort of in, like, peak, in their sort of peak capacity, yeah. And we can get sort of into the more technical details of how those work, but, yeah, I mean, each panel, I think what we proposed here is like 585, 585-watt modules, that's just kind of the nomenclature of...
How big is that?
They're about, they're like three and a half by five and a half feet. That's how big they are.
Actually, my question's about that, so, one of the questions is, do they move in this project?
Yes, in this one they do, yes.
So, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself of going with the next project that you're gonna present, but why is one fixed and one movable?
Yeah, so...
Trackable or tracking?
Yeah, it really comes down to the terrain. So the Harris site has a bit more slope issues, which is, you know, the tracker projects require a lot more, you know, less gradient in the terrain.
So flat ground?
Exactly. And so, so the other site, the Harris site, it was just better set up for a fixed tilt. Fixed tilts produce less. They don't produce as much electricity, right, because they're not, you know, tracking the sun all year round, but just sort of one of the, one of the things you have to contemplate when you're citing these projects.
Okay, aiming which way, that was answered. How high off the ground are they mounted?
So these ones are, I believe they're like three feet off the ground from sort of the bottom edge, right? And then they're tilting right in the middle of the day, they're gonna be flat, and so they're probably closer to four to five feet off the ground.
Do they get hot?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Do they get hot to the touch?
No, no.
Are they highly reflective? So if you are at that angle of reflection, are you gonna be blinded by sunlight reflecting off of a sea of, like a giant mirror?
So they are, I mean, they are, yeah, they are designed to absorb as much light as possible, so they are, they have like anti-reflective coating, because the more...
So they're sucking up the light instead of reflecting?
They're trying to get as much light as possible, yeah. They'll do a glare study, like, I think there are, you know, some situations where that can happen, but for the most part, they are designed to absorb as much light as possible.
Okay. And one of the images you showed off of Plank Road and a bunch of utility poles, could those be underground? Could that be underground instead of adding a bunch of utility poles?
So the utility poles, so these are...
We do subdivisions. We require builders, home builders, to put all the utilities underground.
Yeah, so this is, so whenever we install these projects, the utility has three...
Three or four?
Three of these poles are owned by the utility. So I think there's some potential of that, but it's, you know, it's a little bit harder to work with utility on that stuff, but that's certainly something that we can explore. It's pretty standard that we have these above-ground poles for these, but I know there's some options there.
So that's within the realm of possibility?
It's within the realm of possibility, yes.
Okay.
Or it may be, excuse me, possible to move the equipment on those connection poles maybe further back down the road, so it's not as visible at the road?
Yeah, that might be, we'll have to ask about that, because I, you know, right, because they, their utility, right, they're operating within a utility easement, and, you know, whether they can, we can get them to accept an easement that's further up into the project is a question, so we can dig into that.
Yeah, if you look at the array that Penfield has, it's a 1.3 megawatt.
Yep.
And all of those poles are within the fence.
Okay, okay.
So they come from the road, but then those equipment poles that the utility ties into are inside the fence.
Yep. Okay, okay, yeah, we can explore that and get into more of those details.
And also, just to point out, so, and I think there may actually be one, one additional pole in this rendering than we're actually proposing, but, so, there is a few poles, and then it does go underground after that, so there are not poles around the whole entire system. I just wanted to point that out, not, dissuading from the fact that we will look and see if we can move more underground and how that, or back further. But I did want to point out that most of the electricity is proposed is underground right now. It's only when we start to connect to the grid that we have poles.
Okay. And while I reserve the right to ask more questions as I think of them, I have one more, but I think you answered, how often will vehicles use the access road? You mentioned a couple times a year?
Yeah, like, three or four times a year is normally how often we're there.
So you don't have regular mowing or anything because of the specific ground cover that you're choosing?
We do have mowing, it's just not, you know, it doesn't need to be, you know, it's not like mowing someone's front lawn, right? It's sort of, will go, depending on the year, but, you know, three, three or four times a year, depending on how long the grass is getting. Or, you know, we've been doing a lot of sheep grazing for our projects, it's becoming more common, where someone will actually come out with their sheep, leave them at the site for a few days, eat the grass, pick them up and take them back. So it's just sort of a, you know, sort of a different approach that people are doing instead of bringing out, you know, lawn mowers onto the site.
Okay. All right. Joe?
So, have you held any community meetings with the neighbors for any of the projects that you've done?
So we have, for the Harris Road, so we, let me rewind a little bit. So we sent out mailers to all of the neighbors who had parcels either adjacent to or right across the street from adjacent to, for both of these projects, so they should have received mailers from us for all of those property owners. And then we have spoken with one of the neighbors on this project, and we spoke with a group of neighbors earlier this week on the Harris Road project.
So you spoke with a group of the neighbors, so was this something that was publicly made available to all of the neighbors, that they could come to the library, or...
We have not done that yet. We are, we are happy to do that. We are completely happy to have that type of presentation. At this point, it was a, we're letting you know this is going on, this is how to get ahold of us if you have questions.
Fair enough. So we do have a number of people here that have some questions and some concerns, and rather than using this, you know, forum to get deep down into the weeds, you know, we often ask developers of other types of projects to hold meetings with the community and invite them to come on a Saturday or Sunday. Invite them to the site, invite them to, you know, see another site that you've developed.
Yeah.
And they can ask questions about, you know, the buffering and the fencing and what it looks like and how long it lasts, and, you know, what happens, you know, at the end of the life expectancy of the panels and, you know, all of those, you know, concerns that they have.
We are, we are more than happy to do that, so we will set that up at any time.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Kelly?
I just have, I just have a couple. One is, so, maybe this is an odd question, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. So when the, when the system's all set up, does it emit any sound at all?
So, we were just actually getting some detail on this, like, the panels are moving, but it's moving to follow the sun, so it's moving extremely slowly, so there is some sound, and we have some of that information, we'll make sure we share it, but it's, it's very minimal, like, it's very low decibels. The transformers, I mean, like, any transformer that's just on a utility pole can emit some sounds, and so we will, we have a...
Yeah, so right now, as we mentioned, we're ordering a glare analysis, and our engineers are working on that. They're also gonna do a noise analysis study, so what that will do is it will tell you how far out you can hear any decibels above ambient levels. So we should have that information, I'm gonna say, within six weeks. They're working on that now.
Can you explain a little bit further the light and glare analysis?
I'm gonna ask Matt to explain that a little further.
It's funny, I mean, we actually don't do that many of these. It's usually something that's required, like, in and around airports, not generally here. Like, I think that's sort of the one area where potentially there's some issue with glare, but like, you know, with the way these things are pointed, like, you know, I mean, I've been around these things for a long time, and I've never really experienced glare. So it's more just to show, like, if there was glare, it would be from these locations at these times of the year, sort of taking into account the position of the sun and all that. So they'll kind of get into, get into those, to those details in the study, and, like Ella said, we will share that information when we have it.
And do the panels break? Like, if kids are playing baseball in a...
Yes, yeah, I mean, they can certainly break, like, you know, you know, if, they've happened, if there's, you know, heavy hailstorms, like, they can break. And so we're, again, we're monitoring the system. If a panel goes down, we come out, the, we usually have spares, we'll take the one off, put the new one on, and we'll take the other one and go, and it'll go be recycled.
Is that a lengthy process, or is that just a quick substitution?
Pretty straightforward, pretty quick process, yep, just unscrewing a few bolts and putting the other ones on, so...
Okay. And then one last thing, I know we talked about security and fencing and all that. Well, how do you know if, like, do you get a monitor that, like, you know?
Yes.
Dings, or is there security cameras, or what?
Yeah, I mean, as I said, like, we, sometimes I know there's been projects that have been, have had security cameras, but, you know, we have like a real-time monitoring system that, you know, either someone is directly monitoring it, or if something happens, they're getting, you know, an email or a text message or something to tell, to tell if there's an issue. And the system will, you know, if it's a serious issue, will obviously will be alerted and, right, there's sort of different levels of alerts that you can get for the type of incident that happens. But again, I mean, we've been doing this for a long time, and, you know, there's been very few sort of significant issues that have come up on any of these.
Okay. One thing that I would like to add a little bit, going back to the glare analysis study, is, as Matt said, we don't always do these. We do these if we're around airport. The reason why we decided to do it proactively with both of these projects is because we recognize that there are some nearby developments that are nowhere around these projects, and we wanted to just make the community feel safe. So it's not because we expect a concern, we were just trying to be really proactive and, you know, helping you understand how this project would be, knowing that it was, you know, nearby to a development. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm just curious what you would do in the event of a fire? How fire could be handled here? I imagine you, you can't use water, or I don't know, maybe?
Correct, yeah, you can't, you can't use water, right, because it's, and it's an electrical fire. So, you know, there's, obviously, there's, there's different trainings, as Ella mentioned, that we will do with the fire department on sort of how to handle these things if it happens, but, you know, there's sort of a protocol that we can, that we'll go through, and I think we have a, we do have a safety manual that sort of outlines how that all works.
Can you communicate that with the fire districts? I think this might be Northeast Joint, maybe?
Yeah, they're in the Northeast Joint Fire District.
Have you ever had a fire at any of your other sites?
We have not. We've had, we've had, you know, we've had some equipment that has been damaged, but nothing like a, nothing like a fire. Like, the fires that people, you know, there's been some battery fires, and again, we're not exploring any batteries here, but for the most part, this is all pretty standard electrical equipment, transformers and switchgear, all sort of stuff that exists in an industrial facility, so, you know, the risk of fire is generally pretty, pretty limited.
Okay.
Any other question? How's Greenspark come up with two locations in Penfield? How does that work, or...
It's funny, so, you know, right, we're primarily a contractor, we're primarily a builder, but we do sort of development of our own projects and have done more of these. In both cases, the, we were contacted by, in this case, the landowner, I was contacted by sort of an intermediary who put us in touch with Gary Smith on the project, and then the other landowners reached out to us six years ago, I think is how long ago it was. That's, that's how long that we've taken to get to this point. And, you know, we just sort of, we, they suggest that they are interested in this, and we do our due diligence to understand, you know, is this something we can do, do the necessary studies, interact with the utility, and, and sort of get, get to this point. But we didn't, you know, we do outreach to, to folks more, it's more common for us to do that outreach. But for these, for these projects, there was no sort of active outreach to, to people.
Particularly, contact you.
Yep.
But thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'd like to open it up to the audience. And just as a repeat statement, if you are not physically here and still would like to comment, you can call in at 585-340-8771, or submit a comment electronically on the town website, penfield.org, and there should be a link to this meeting. When I, I'm gonna go through the list of slips of paper that you were also cooperative in filling out. And once again, I will beg forgiveness if I butcher your, the pronunciation of your name. But when I call you up, please come up to one of these two chairs, state your name and address for the record, and then we'd love to hear your comments. And please make your comments to the board, not to the applicant. So the first is Tim Murphy.
Good evening, planning board, everyone. Tim Murphy, 48 Crowell Drive. I'm here representing both myself and the Color Penfield Green Advocacy Group. I'd like to read a letter that a number of us in town collaborated to put together and present tonight in support of these projects. So I'd like to do that first, and then I have a couple of questions for my own person here. So, I'm gonna read directly for you. Town of Penfield Planning Board Meeting, the Northrop and Harris Road Solar Projects. Color Penfield Green is supportive of renewable projects in our community. We must rapidly transition off of fossil fuels, and that means building solar arrays on hundreds of rooftops on Lilluus Fields in our hometown. We are grateful that we have residents looking to add to the green energy on the grid. It's the only way we'll reach critical climate goals we're striving for in New York State. The most relevant goal here is reaching 70% of our electricity from renewable energy by 2030. We understand that RGD will be upgrading the local grid around these solar developments. Across the country, electrical grid needs massive upgrades and investment to keep up with the demands of electrification, so that we can seamlessly transition to a healthy and sustainable homes and transportation. We should not underestimate how important this opportunity is. We have also learned that these solar developments may also provide new community solar credits in the RG Navy service area. We, Color Penfield Green, ran a local solar slash battery storage class through the Penfield Parks and Recreation last month and called the community solar companies. Currently, the waitlist is six to 12 months for community solar in our area. Clearly, there is high demand for this and the 5% to 10% energy savings that also put green energy on the grid. So, got a question here. Has there been any discussion of agriculture, agro-solar or agro-votaecs? It's a term that Mr. Kenauer kind of alluded to. You're seeing more and more projects that are trying to multi-use the land. And I don't want to go too deeply with that, but this is an opportunity that hopefully we'll get, you know, some more conversation around, whether it be pollinators or even low-growing crops. I don't want to go into much detail and waste all my time, but I think it's something we should definitely explore and continue the conversation on. Okay, I'll start back up here. We encourage consideration of this project as a positive mixed use that could support local farming. In the absence of agric-solar, we hope that the area could be seeded with native flowers to support local insects, birds, and other wildlife. We've been following developments in the solar industry, and we're excited to share the results of a five-year study of solar farms planted with wildflowers and massive grasses in the state of Minnesota. The team observed an increased diversity of native insect pollinators and agricultural benefit insects, including honeybees and native bees, which showed a 20%, 20-fold increase in the numbers, butterflies, beetles, and others. The insect pollinators visited the soybean flowers and the adjacent fields, all good things. We wanted to point out that the solar fields are not permanent to the landscape. In the future, 25, 30, 40 years from now, these solar panels can be decommissioned, they can be removed, and the land can be traditionally farmed. The materials are mostly entirely glass, aluminum, and copper, all of which are easily recyclable today and will be more easily recyclable in the future. We also appreciate developments in the town that do not add to the vehicle miles driven. Solar arrays make for quiet neighbors. For all these reasons, Color Penfield Green supports the solar developments being proposed tonight. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to share our opinions. So just very briefly, talking for myself, kind of ironically, 10 years ago this week, Bob Kenauer helped me turn on my solar array at my house.
Excuse me, I'm terribly sorry, but if we let everybody go over their time, then-
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can I reengage with a couple of questions later, if there's time permitting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Kelly Nolan.
Hello. My name is Kelly Nolan. I live at 39 Ariana Way. I live at a property that touches this solar array in that back left corner. That is my property. I had, I had put together a whole speech of points I wanted to make, but I think something that really illustrates my point is actually in Ella's presentation. Would you mind jumping back a few slides to the one that showed from Ariana Way, the view that was there? Because I think, yeah, oh, yeah, with the gray house, perfect. So this is the view from my street. As you can see, in the wintertime, these trees are deciduous, the leaves will fall. We will see everything going on in our backyard. I, for one, really love the view that I have. I paid a $40,000 premium on this lot for the green space, and now that will be taken away. Another picture that was shown, if you don't mind jumping back to the one from Robert Michaels. Yes, so I know they had talked about some screening that is also present in this photo. But if you look at the plans, they're actually planning on removing a lot of these trees to make room for the panels. So my neighbors that live here are going to have even less woods than this. And during the wintertime, that is what we're going to be looking at. We don't have information on the fencing. I don't know what an agricultural fence is, but I do know what I see on Jackson Road, and that is not something that I want in my backyard. My community and I gathered together, and we have a petition. 65% of residents of the Rocko Pines neighborhood, which is immediately next to the solar panel farm, oppose the building of it. And 93% of homeowners whose houses directly touch the project oppose it. The only one who didn't sign is currently moving away. So we are not in support of this project. We did submit the petition, so that you all can read it. I do understand that, you know, it's, it's the landowner's property. So if this project does need to proceed, we did include some minimum mitigations in terms of screening. I know you had mentioned some screening. I looked at the paperwork and I saw that we would have four-foot trees, which won't do much, especially when I'm on the second floor of my home. I've planted four-foot trees before, and they take a while to grow. And also, I saw that it was emerald-green arborvitae, which the deer will eat, which us in the neighborhood know. So there, there's a lot of things that I think are open for discussion, some mitigation. And that is, that is all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, is it Ian Mouch? Did I say that right?
It's, it's Much.
Much. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Ian Much. I live at 31 Ariana Way. Just, just down the street from, from where we saw earlier. We do have, as a neighborhood, we have some serious concerns about this project. We would like to see some kind of a study on the impact on home values in the area. Because obviously, this neighborhood that, that we live in is less than two years old. We did pay some extremely high lot fees, and now, in the next two years, we'll be surrounded by a bus garage and solar panels. It doesn't seem to be the agricultural area that we, we're sold. We would like a, a study on the impact on, on the wildlife in the area. We do currently have deer, fox, turkeys, all of which are fantastic, and we enjoy this. And, and we're, we're concerned that these things will, will diminish greatly if this project continues. We do have concerns about traffic noise. As you saw in the, in the outline, the, the access road butts up against the neighborhood. Would it be possible to put the access road on the other side? Again, it's something to consider, something to think about. Traffic noise, road illumination, is, is, will this road be illuminated, you know, by tall lights on poles or anything like that? And will we be able to see these things? We do have plain view of the solar field. My, my backyard backs up to, to this, the field. And, you know, as, as she said, you know, during, especially, you know, when, in the winter, seven months out of the year, there are no leaves, you can see straight through. We're, we're gonna be seeing this for sure. And, and you're, you know, welcome to come see this. I, I appreciate these, these pictures. I, I don't know that they present an accurate view of what, of what we see. The, the community solar idea is, is fantastic, but there's certainly no guarantee that the Penfield community will, will benefit from this. You said yourself, it's conceivable that Penfield could sign up and, and benefit from this. But other than that, who's benefiting? It's not, it's not the Penfield residents, you know, as, as a whole. As far as, as far as noise, they mentioned that these units are about five and a half feet high with three feet off the ground, so now we're talking eight and a half feet, and they move. They're mechanical. Mechanics break down, we all know that, and these are large units, and they're presenting 8,300 of these. There's gonna be noise. There's, there's no question, right? These things move. The trees that they, that they are, that they are offering are only on the north and south ends of this. Again, that entire west side that backs up to the neighborhood, we're going to see this, we're going to feel it. It's, it's a, it's a real concern. And we may, we may, you know, we may benefit from putting, putting trees up along that west side as well. Our current trees are poplar trees, which fall down, and are falling down. That's what they do, that's natural. But they do fall down and they lose their leaves. So we'd be looking for an evergreen kind of tree. As far as the, the mowing, I, I actually grew up next to a sheep farm, and I, I don't want to do that again. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Charles Lumpke.
Hi. Hello? I had some notes that I brought some extra copies along that I wanted to share. Okay, good. My name's Charles Lumpke. Resident at 1226 Northrop Road on the very south end of the Northrop Array Complex. And some of the questions that I had listed here, we've already addressed with the back and forth. Number one, I had a question on the, on the glare. And apparently, there is a glare study that's gonna be done. I'd be curious to know if that's gonna be made public when it's available. Question number two, I had on the weeds and undergrowth, that's pretty much been answered with the mowing. Question three was the solar array feed. They, they won't be using battery storage devices, so special fire control situations need not be addressed. It's, it's pretty typical. Number four, regarding the evergreen trees, are these going to be seedlings that are gonna be planted with very little or no barrier for a long period of time before they mature? Does the town of Penfield have a minimum screening standard for things like this that I need to be adhered to? Someone mentioned earlier, emerald-green shrubs, yes, that's considered deer pizza, I've read. And something like giant arborvitae are deer-resistant and would probably be superior. What are the plans for decommissioning the array at the end of the lease? Will the equipment be physically removed and land restored to its original conditions? If so, who's responsible for such? What's the term of the lease? What happens if the company has to go out of business? Number six, solar array equipment, especially power inverters. These can cause severe electromagnetic interference, EMI, as it's known to radio services. And the Federal Communications Commission, FCC, has established, under Part 15 of their regulations, standards for equipment for these types of installations. And it's to ensure that it does not disrupt radio communications or other licensed services. Devices must be tested for radiated emissions to ensure they don't exceed the limits in 47 CFR Part 15 Subpart B. Equipment must be labeled to indicate that FCC compliance. And I'd like to know whether the, the proposed equipment on this project meets these FCC requirements. And also, does the town of Penfield require such compliance as part of their approval procedures? Compliance in design alone may not prevent interference to radio services if the equipment is not installed properly. It's essential, the essential, excuse me, that good bonding, grounding, and shielding, shielding practices be adhered to during the installation. Will the company installing this equipment attest to their intent to do so? FCC further states that even if a device is certified, it's the user who's ultimately responsible for ensuring that harmful interference is not caused. If it is caused, the user must take steps to either correct it or cease operations. Does a company involved with this project acknowledge the responsibility as put forth by the FCC? And my reasons for bringing this up is because I myself am a licensed amateur radio operator with the FCC assigned call of NN2L. I've operated my station for several decades now. And one of the considerations to moving to Northrop Road 10 years ago was because of its electrically quiet rural surroundings. It's, as it sits, it's a great place to have a ham station. There may be other ham radio operators in the immediate vicinity, I don't know. There may be other potentially affected radio services in the area, I don't know. But our home is roughly several hundred feet away from my property. I'm at the end.
You've, you've gone by your time.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, would anyone else in the audience like to comment on this particular application before we move on to the Harris Road discussion? And feel free to come back to this as well. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
I think I have a simple question, and that is...
If you could give us your name and address.
Sure. Jean Oswald, 1424 Jackson Road. I just have a question, if there's a storm, you know, and there's lightning in the area, do the panels attract lightning in any way?
They're all grounded, just for, you know, that's all part of the process, is for grounded. So it shouldn't be tracked anything more than any other structure, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. You had another?
I just wanted to know...
Come on up. You could be a star.
I just wanted to know what the next steps are, what residents can expect. That's it.
I can speak a little bit to that. There's a number of things that they're waiting for on the site, one of which is wetland delineations and things like that from the DEC. We take all the information that has been given, information that's gleaned from you folks, and it's filtered through, and we ask for those questions to be addressed. So that will probably also take some time. And once everything is answered to satisfaction of reviewing agencies, the board, the staff, then at that point, probably vote on it. That answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir, come on up.
I did not fill out a thing because I wasn't intending to speak.
That's okay.
We own...
If we could have your name and address.
Frank Stoltz, and we own property 1265 Plank, which is by far, excuse me, by far the biggest continual frontage to the project. Personally, I look at it as, I have the concerns of the other people. The alternative, I think the board's got to consider too, is you're going to get the same type of information from, if the owner wants to develop into homes, they're going to, don't want to look at a roof, they don't want to look at another house. So I think with the proper planning, this could be actually beneficial for the people who live around there. Because that, I believe you said, one acre development in that area, and they're using 20, so they're, right there, you've got 20 homes that you'd be backing up, depending on the setbacks and stuff, a lot closer, a lot more visible to all the neighbors. So that's something to consider. And I have some concerns because it goes on two sides of our property. And the driveway off a plank will affect ours, because we have one of the driveways that's in common that we have to deal with, and screening on the south part of our property. But those are, to me, things that can be worked out. So I just didn't want to say anything, but there's our, there are other worse things to look at than another buddy's roof, or on their second floor, their, you know, their pool that's 50 feet away and screaming in noise. So there's, there's got to be a balance, and I just hope the board considers everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may just add to your comment about the next steps for the residents, because the town board, the town enacted a new provisions that deal with these renewable energy systems. It may not be codified yet, and it may, I mean, it's local law number one of 2025.
It is codified.
Oh, it is, so it is already incorporated in, with the E-code already?
So when you go to the E-code, it's not going to be searchable like the rest of them? They provide that service like once a year, and I think it's going to be March of 2026.
So they might need to look at the new laws.
If you go to the new law section, it's a PDF.
Yeah. And so it's, just so that you can look it up if you so choose. It's an amendment to the zoning code, it's Chapter 250, and it's a new Article 16. And if you go to the E-code, you'll be able to find it as local law number one of 2025. So just, that might be harder to find.
I'm glad you brought that up, because there are a number of questions that have been posed by residents here tonight that you might find if you go into the town's website and look up in our local law, that many of these things that you might be concerned about have been addressed in the adoption of this new law.
Like the decommissioning plan, maintenance plan, requirement for a bond, things like that are all set forth in the code.
Actually, we have, if anybody really wants, we have an extra copy right here.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak to this application before we move to the next one? Any other questions from the board right now? All right. Why don't we move on to the next one?
All right.
Kind of a more of the same.
Yep. Application number two, Fisher Associates, 180 Charlotte Street, Rochester, New York, 14607. On behalf of Harris Road Solar One LLC, requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval and a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a ground-mounted photovoltaic solar array system at 1926 Harris Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. The solar array will be interconnected with the RG&E utility grid. The properties now are formerly owned by Brian and Sherry Gorin, and zoned Rural Agricultural RA2, Application 25P-0006, SBL 125.04-1-7.3.
You're on again.
We are not going to bore you with about Greenspark, because we feel everybody has already heard that, so we want to save your time.
But I'm going to challenge you before you get started.
Yeah.
Because I asked a question about the previous application and holding a meeting with the neighbors. And in your cover letter to this application, you say, "Our intent is to engage with all landowners with parcels that have bought the project site prior to the public hearing." So has that been done?
Yes. And so how we engaged with them was we sent those mailers out and informing them of...
So you didn't actually engage?
So we have...
You sent them some information?
Yeah. So we sent them information and with the offer to contact us if they had questions. But like I said, we are more than happy to hold community meetings for both of these projects and would coordinate with you on the best way to manifest that. We're always a little conscious about doing that, because we don't want to interrupt the town's process. So we really want to make sure that we're working with the town to adhere to your processes. Can everybody hear me? I just want to do a sound check.
I can hear you. Can you hear her in the back? Okay, we got the thumbs up, so.
Wonderful. All right.
I think that was a thumbs up.
So we're still Greenspark, we're still out of the local area, and we still will own, maintain, and eventually decommission this project. And so this project is proposed to be located at 1926 Harris Road. The parcel area is 23.61 acres, and we, our array area will be in 18.7 acres of that. With that, the total output is expected to be 4,500 megawatts AC and 6.12 megabots DC. That would equilibrate to about the estimated of 760 homes powered. The same timelines for this as for the Northrop project, which is really dependent on regulatory approvals from both this board and DEC, et cetera. And so this is the proposed outline for this project, where we will just have one completely contained solar array and then an access road to be able to access it. This is, again, illustrated purposes only. This is drone photography of what we propose that the array will look like. That being said, I will say that it probably won't be as green as it is in this time of year, but we will be planting grass. But this picture was taken when things weren't green, so it probably won't stick out like that. For here, we, again, plan to maintain most, the natural screening, that is, all the way around the perimeter of the project. And then there was one area where there was not really a lot of screening up along, abutting some properties that are along Harris Road. So we plan to add additionally screening there. In conversations that we recently had with some of the neighbors to this project, they asked if it would be possible to add additional screening on the north end, which would be not quite shown on this image. And we're looking into how we can add screening to address their concerns. So again, this is towards Harris Road across the top, and then Salt Road would be quite a ways off, but towards the bottom of this picture, just to help orientate. So here is an overview of the solar array. We could fit this all on one page. As you see, we don't really have any options for the access road. This parcel is a flat lot parcel with very little road frontage. And so here, we have four pictures taken to help show, to help show what this might look like in the area. So along Harris Road, with that little bit of road frontage is where we would add our access road. Similar to the pole situation before, we'll have those, the three poles owned by the utility company, and then a few extras, and then it will go underground after that. We can continue talking as we did with the Northrop project on this one as well.
Should the access road be paved or gravel?
Gravel.
Same with the Northrop?
Same with the Northrop.
Yeah.
Usually, the apron is paved right along the roadway, but the rest is gravel.
And then, this is from Center Court Lane, so around here would be more along the access road. So they do have some, right now, the access road is just wooded territory, so this would be where the driveway would be. There would still be some trees remaining. And this is from the end of Center Court Lane viewed, looking here, to what it would look like. This is along Salt Road. You can see it a little bit over here. But again, it's screened already naturally. Again, we took these pictures in the winter, trying to do it when there's no leaves on the tree, to show you the worst-case scenario. And so now we're going just back to some of the community benefits, which we've already discussed. So again, I want to save everybody's time, and you can read the stats for this if you're interested.
Will this presentation be available?
We are happy to make it available in whatever way you would like us to make it available. We can send it to our planning staff, and I don't know what the best mechanism for doing that, but I can coordinate with your planning staff on how to make it available publicly.
Okay. Terry, you want to start?
Community thing, so you said you met with several people regarding this project?
Yes.
Together, groups, or individually, they came and called you, you met with them?
Yeah. So we were contacted by a resident who lives on Center Court Lane, who then would met, connected me with, I think, I think, all of the residents on Center Court Lane. I could be accurate on that. And then we all met on a Zoom call together.
Okay.
To go over many other questions.
And all their concerns were answered?
So some of the, some of the concerns that came up were, like I said, seeing if we could add some additional screening on the north border, which we're looking into. And they also are asking about the pollinator mix. We sent them some information. They've, have emailed me back and sent me some questions about that. I haven't had time to look into that today, but we'll be looking into that early next week.
So buffering you have addressed. What about the fencing? You just mentioned fencing at the other project, fencing on this project.
Proposed the same type of fencing here, the agricultural fencing.
I know, you're not going to need any variances designing?
We do not anticipate needing variances on this project. We're still working with the planning department to ensure that that is accurate.
Yeah. Question about, so are you, so you guys are building this to locations? Now, are you with a contract with RG&E? So you already know where...
Yeah, so, yeah. So we have to go through a pretty detailed study with RG&E, which we can provide a copy of. It's a coordinated, I never remember the acronym, it's a CESIR. And so basically, it's a, it's basically a eight, ten, nine-month process, where they do their own studies of what the impacts were going to be of this generation on the grid. And what are, you know, we have to pay them to be able to install the system. So we have to pay for potentially upgrades to the distribution lines that are directly on the road here, as well as the substation. So we're, you know, I believe we've made most of, both of the down payments on those. We have to make a down payment on those projects, just to kind of keep, keep ourselves, keep the projects active, keep it in the queue list, and those have all happened. So we're, you know, with RG&E, they are underway sort of on their studies. You know, we have not made the final payments on those projects yet, but, you know, that process is underway with them.
Have you had contracts prior with RG&E?
Many, yes.
These other ones in Henrata?
Yep, yep.
The west side where you can, okay.
Yeah. And so one additional benefit that I was remiss in not adding into this slide is actually, with these projects, we do do upgrades to the grid and to the substations. And Henrata, for example, that has helped benefit other local developers, who were having a problem getting their, because they're, getting their projects approved because RG&E couldn't handle the power that they would generate. So these projects can actually help assist in bringing the grid more up to date.
So once the, decided what homes or commercial locations get the electricity and stuff, who, if there's any problems or concerns, who do they call? You folks at Greenspark, or they call RG&E then?
Oftentimes, they will call us. You know, people have our information. Usually, there's, there's a company in between that's sort of a customer management service, right? That's sort of handling, A, the interaction with RG. Now, as I mentioned, there is a billing program where this can all be run through RG&E as well. So in that case, they would be the contact point. So there's a, there's a few different, few different ways to do it. But oftentimes, you know, we have a number of these projects, even if we're sort of not managing the customers, people know that we are involved, and they will still call us, and we'll sort of direct them to the right people if they have any billing issues, which, you know, we all have experienced some billing issues with RG&E.
Yeah. And that's what my next question is, your experience with RG&E has been good from that standpoint? You know what I'm talking about?
You know, I think, I have to give like my most diplomatic answer. You know, a lot of times with these projects, right, especially in the sort of, you know, these have been happening really for the last seven or eight years. And sort of the first wave of those projects, RG&E didn't have a great handle on how to bill these projects correctly, and had lots of delays and sort of getting the credits. So oftentimes, we do a lot of these, we have onsite rooftop projects for commercial customers, and customers would go, you know, several months without getting a bill, because RG&E is sort of figuring out how to do their credits. And so we have to sort of step in and sort of, you know, kind of be the conduit between the customer and RG&E to sort of make sure that all their billing gets rounded out. And so that's, that's constantly something that we're involved in all the time. I can tell you lots of horror stories about it, so.
I'm sure you can.
There was one other question that was brought up, and I just want to clarify it because it's an easy one, but we do not have any lighting on these projects, so that should not be an issue to nearby neighbors.
Do you not have any what?
Lighting.
Lighting.
I think that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Bob?
Just one question, on the access, on the access road, you identify a surface water crossing. Could you describe that on the print? I think the one I'm looking at, it's kind of a rust or a red color.
Yeah.
Or maybe, yeah.
Yeah. I, I could try to give you a very layman's, but I think that would be better if I followed up and had our engineer explain that to you a little bit more than I do. But there's just, there's a little to...
Could swale?
Swale, lower area, yeah.
Yeah. Swale there, so it's just to be, it's just crossing over that without, without trying to totally fill it. But I can get a little... But I, I can get a little bit better of an answer for you from our engineer and get that sent over.
Okay. I didn't have a chance to look at P R C notes. Was that identified?
Well, we have several comments and concerns with some of the road runoff, but generally, I think that's what we thought it was, was generally a low area to allow the existing water that currently probably flows that way to maintain their existing flow path, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Jim, Kelly?
I am all set.
Me too.
Okay, I'd like to open this up to the audience at this point. First speaker, Dan Richards.
My name is Dan Richards. I live at one Center Court Lane that's situated at the corner of Harris and Center Court. The access road that they're describing goes along the back of my property.
So your south property line?
I'm sorry?
Probably your south property line?
Uh, my south property line, correct. My wife and I moved from Fairport to Penfield. When we lived in Fairport, we bought a house that was about a mile away from the landfill. And at the time we bought it, we didn't smell anything. After a while, the wind shifted and we realized that, you know, this, this wasn't a good place for us. We lived there for many years and then we finally moved. We were looking for a rural environment. We moved out to Penfield and we searched the local neighbors, sorry, neighbors, but we Googled everybody in the neighborhood. And um one of the things we came up with was the Town of Penfield Open Space Plan that the town had put out, which was done March of 2006. And um the introduction to this is the Town of Penfield, in an effort to prepare for the 21st century, needs to be mindful of the features that make Penfield unique and desirable. It is with this promise that the town pursues a preservation strategy for open spaces. And it goes on, there's, it's a 42-page report. But included in that is the parcel we're talking about, 1926 Harris.
Is it considered parcel, right?
It was a considered parcel for the, the open spaces. And I'm not sure what has changed since then that, um, you know, we can consider this now for um solar energy production. But it is not what we originally moved there for.
So that's something that uh this parcel wasn't part of the open space.
I'd have to look at, I'd have to look into that. I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head.
And does the code, for some reason, allow construction of these types of uh
Actually, we can probably tell if it's
Open space.
The open space lands would be something that you can see on the G I S mapping, I think.
Yeah, to clarify.
And there are numerous parcels considered.
Right, I realize that, that, there's a 42-page report.
And a number of them were then, uh, they had conservation easements on a lot of land in East Penfield, actually. But you would be able to tell on the G I S mapping, which uh Mr. Prinzing might be looking at right now.
Yeah, so while the open space plan is the open space inventory, which shows a lot of properties that could potentially are targeted as areas in town that may be beneficial to be preserved as open space, it doesn't necessarily mean that they were either acquired or protected in any way as open space. So um in the years since that open space plan was developed, properties have been added to open space and have been preserved either through easements or as we've mentioned. So currently, no, this particular property is not, you know, it doesn't have any easements or the town hasn't acquired it and preserved it as open space.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
We, we were part of the Zoom meeting with Ella and uh the company. And they were very receptive to anything we had to say. I would just like to be able to sit down with them and get some things in writing rather than promises that we'll, you know, put up screening or we will put up gates to make you happy. I would like to see things in writing before anything moves forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, John Getz.
It's hard to follow up after my friend and neighbor just finished.
Good evening, yes, my name is John Getz. I live at five Center Court Lane. The property, obviously next door to Mr. Richards. And briefly, before getting back into script, Mr. Burton, you've raised some good points that I just wanted to reflect. I also was waiting to see what information, because I read that in the the notice. I did, in fact, get a flyer. I made a, an email to to Ella and her team. They did respond to me. I think the email went on, out on Sunday. She contacted me Monday. We were able to do a Zoom conference, which I was able to initiate with myself and three of my neighbors. And it was helpful, so I did want to acknowledge that. To your point, however, I also do believe that with this type of project, especially when we're looking at a mirror project, no pun intended, just north of us, that your, your proposal of, of having the applicants open it up even more would be a good one, because I think they are receptive to that. What I'd like to do is, is spend a little bit of my time just addressing some of the big picture items and then items that I think are more specific to this project. And I think, uh, Mr. Waishar, the town attorney's already addressed one of them, which was fire code and fire safety issues. Also, as somebody who's had to deal with remediation issues in the past in my practice, just reconfirming that all of our Ts are crossed. And I know this town does a great job with that, but I think that's something that we need to, to have that future planning in place. Because 20 to 30 years may seem like a long time to some of us, but it goes fast. With regards to this specific location, and this also addresses some of the issues involving what I'll call the, it's more of a ditch on that location. On the east side of Harris, the water runs from south to north, because there's a hill there. And so that does get quite wet, especially in the, the spring. And this year, it's still quite wet. So it's more than just a, a little bit of a culvert. And in fact, on our line, lane, there is a, a pass through that goes through. It's something to just be
Culvert under.
Yes, the culvert underneath. So that's something to address. As this board is well aware, Penfield has significant issues with drainage. This land slopes, that's hence the reason for the, these uh solar panels that are proposed. I would just ask that the, and the applicants indicated an acknowledgement of this, but the board seriously uh keep a close eye on the drainage issues. That's been evident more now than ever this particular month, because I've seen it now. And the concern would be with this type of project, what does it mean? I, I don't have enough data right now to, to share with you, but it's something to look at. More specific to our, as, as Mr. Richards pointed out, Dan's property would have the, the poles, and again, that's something that is, we have our lines underground. We'd address that with the applicants as well. I would strongly encourage the board to make that something to, to be more than a consideration, if you will, because it would have a certainly, at the very least, a significant nuisance value to my neighbor, but it also creates other, other issues beyond that. The padded by my, there's a pad, we've had discussions about that. I'd ask the board to, to look at the location of the pad that's on the northwest portion of the property. It looks to me that it's very close to the property line, and there was suggestions to the applicant to look about remediating that back and then having better screening around that. And also, if we could um get the applicant to provide us maybe the materials as to what the, the agri fence would look like. And last but not least, the greenage. Uh, I think that the, the, there's good ways to sh- to save the area of the look, if you will. But somebody brought up that looking over from your, your second floor, we want to avoid have, no offense to the, to the location or to this project, but we don't necessarily want to look at it from our second floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Malcolm Nolton.
Can you put up the screen, go back a couple? One more, no, go the other way, I guess. One more, yeah, right there.
That's good.
There you go.
All right, my name's Malcolm Nolan. I live in 1990 Harris Road, probably most impacted person on this project. We, our property, it joins the uh west and south side of the property. We have concerns over uh property value that's going to go down when that gets put in. Our barn in is 60 to 65 feet from the project and the house is 125 to 130 feet from the project. We'll be looking right at those panels. I got worried about the glare from the panels, worried about the noise from the panels. You've got uh several things that create, well, panels don't create noise, but the system does. The inverters make, will be, make a noise, transformers, the cooling fans and any coil vibrations that happen through the project. How many inverters are going to be on the project? How many transformers are going to be at the project? Because you got two locations there for equipment. You know, um, the inverters, they make a noise at 120 hertz, about 74 decibels each one of them, so that becomes quite a bit of noise. Talked about the panels, when you talked about the panels for the other project, saying that uh they're three and a half, four feet off the ground and, you know, they're, they're going to be flat, some of the types, well, that's sort of misleading. The panels will end up being somewhere between 10 to 15 feet off the ground at completion at, when they're upright. That's something that you're, didn't really make it sound too good. Worried about toxic leakage, leakage from the components of the panels that we talked about breakage of them. They have cadmium and lead in them that will leach into the ground if the panels get broken. The uh potential dividing, subdividing our property in the future, if we wanted to subdivide it, have, sell off a lot or something, that's pretty much puts it right out of the question. So our 20 acres becomes, well, I guess we just leave it as farmland forever, which is not an option. I also looked up online what the safe distance is to live from a solar farm. I got from a solar Florida state study thing that they had. In general, solar farms are required to be built at least 1.86 miles from residential areas. And then it recommended, recommendations for single, you know, homes near it, it's recommended to live at least 1640 feet from large scale solar farms. So in this situation, because it's, you know, not a subdivision that they're talking about, it's a single family home and we're 125, 30 feet from it, you know? So you got the noise pollution, you got the toxic toxicity of leakage, um, fire risk. They talked about, um, you got fire risk with electrical malfunctions, equipment defects, lightning strikes. Electricity goes to electricity. So this is on a hill, up near the peak top of a hill and has more opportunity of a lightning strike at that piece of property setting than other ones. Let's see, you got the glare we covered. Okay, you got disruption of wildlife. Currently, right now, that land's not being farmed. It's basically used for wildlife. A lot of deer bedding now in that area. So once they go and they turn that into solar fields, the deer are going to now move across Harris Road to do their bedding, and then they're going to come across Harris Road to do their eating in my fields. So now you've just upgraded the potential of car accidents, deer truck accidents on Harris Road.
Sir, I'm sorry, you're, you're out of time.
Oh, I am, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
I wasn't looking at the clock.
Are you one of the ones that provided a, a letter to the town?
No.
Okay, you, you're, you're welcome to do that. You've got a lot of things here.
I got a lot of stuff.
That's fine, you know.
And as far as their Green Spark meeting, we got this two days ago. That's their communication.
Well, but they have offered to hold
Right.
Productive meetings with the neighbors.
They actually tried to communicate, which they didn't try to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael Nolton.
All right. Good evening, I'm Michael Nolton. I grew up and my family still lives at 1990 Harris Road. And um I think there's many things that I would like to address. So I think a more formal meeting with Green Spark might be a good idea. But um my expertise, I'm actually a electrical engineer and worked for R G N E in hydro generation for the last 10 years. So I have quite a bit of knowledge in this field. And one thing that wasn't brought up is actually the performance of utility scale solar arrays in the upstate New York area. And um one, I, I would like to state that the Penfield Town Solar Array, um, right on the website states that over the first five years, its um performance was 8.7% of the nameplate capability. And if you in turn use this for the proposed solar array on Harris Road, the project would produce 3,500 megawatt hours per year, which is equivalent to roughly 325 homes. The Penfield proposed project did use the same referenced, um, the same reference site to come up with their performance, and it was equivalent to about half of what the actual performance was in that first five years. Now, I know the Penfield array was totally different to offset their usage, where this is actually you, is proposed for utility scale usage and put onto the grid. So I just wanted to bring that up because I know that wasn't brought up by other people. And I have a lot of other questions as far as um, you know, the environmental impact, which I think is quite severe, that was stated. This land for decades has been a, really a wildlife sanctuary. It's just um ultimately with an eight-foot fence around it is going to be no longer. That's, you know, and then there's the um impact of property values, which um was brought up. And there is a peer reviewed study that shows that um within a half-mile range of large-scale ground mounted solar arrays, property values have lost 5 to 7%. And I think that should be looked at.
Do you have the source of that study?
Yeah, we can provide that, but yeah.
Submit that?
So I guess, you know, we have a lot of questions that we'd like to bring up to Green Spark and directly, and I think one of, some of my questions that I've noticed from the position I'm in, um, who's actually maintaining the property? Who's maintaining the equipment? We've had a lot of issues with um utility scale solar systems where private equity firms come in, buy them up, they're used as tax, you know, they use the tax income to generate revenue. They're not actually feasible and they don't have any employees and they rely on R G N E and local emergency response for outages, for faults and stuff, stuff of that manner. They said they're only going to be there a couple times a year. We maintain um hydro facilities and we have people on site every single day maintaining these dams and waterways and generation plants, and they should do the same. And we've noticed that has been a huge issue as well, so I think that needs to be brought up. So ultimately, I oppose the project. So ultimately, I oppose the project, and we'll leave it at that.
Sir, I just want to, are you a Penfield resident?
Yes.
You are?
Hey, my actual.
You mentioned something about.
Yeah, yeah, I grew up there, but my actual resident right now is 117 Beacon Hills Drive North, Penfield, New York.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application?
Yes.
Tim Murphy, 48, Carroll Drive. I'll be real brief. As I said, I kind of had a two-part approach here. One is color Penfield green, and one, you know, just as a community resident and someone that's been terribly interested in solar over many years. And again, I ended thanking Bob Kenauer for helping install the solar at our house, and we've had just a great experience. It's been, you know, very positive, very viable, and that's one of the points I wanted to make. I mean, we look around and you see the solar arrays, but until you actually run the numbers or live the numbers, I should say, you don't know. And we've created almost 100% of the electricity for our residents, and we've had a great experience. I would like to encourage us again to be creative in our approach to these projects if we're going forward. I can't say enough about the agro boltex. Again, we're not going to solve it here, but I almost think it demands its own conversation of sorts, because it could be just a great solution on a couple of different fronts. Question, has any type of environmental impact study been done as a prerequisite to this point?
This is a Type 1 Action under Seeker, so full environmental assessment form gets filled out.
Okay.
It gets evaluated. We have not made a determination, I believe, at this, tonight, we can vote to become lead agency, or declare that we're lead agency, but we haven't determined.
Your information gathering right now.
Environmental significance as to whether it'll trigger an environmental impact statement or not.
To be determined.
To be determined.
Correct. Okay, thank you, thank you. Will any topsoil be removed from either one of these properties? Question.
Do you want us to respond to this, sir?
You can answer if you'd like, if you know the answer.
Usually, there is some grading involved in these projects, less so for these fixed-tilt arrays. Usually, there's not. If there is topsoil removed, we will have a soil stockpile location where that will be stored. So I think those are details, usually it's part of the SWIP process that we'll sort of get into those details.
Because you've just seen too many projects that have scraped the topsoil and then resold it?
Yeah, that is certainly not something that we would be doing.
No, if any soil is moved, it will be stockpiled on-site, so it will remain.
And not resold to anyone else?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, didn't mean to answer for you.
No, no, you're fine.
Just wondering, in terms of process here, should these type of opportunities go through the ECC first, so that they can ask better questions than people like me? Just wondering, you know, again, here it's a public hearing, you're getting some information. Just wondering, has that board had an opportunity to kind of walk this through with these folks?
I would almost, I can't guarantee, but I'm guessing that they.
They're aware of it.
ECC's purview is limited to properties subject to EPODs.
Okay, so this is not in their jurisdiction?
Disturbance in EPODs, yeah.
Okay, just wondering, because again, people smarter than me could ask better questions on how we go forward here. So, last thing is, I've heard some overtones a couple of times about actually capacity of electricity in our town, and I've seen things on the news about Henrietta. And I don't know if it's true or not, and I don't know if this is part of a solution, but I've heard development in certain parts of our area has been hamstrung by the lack of RG&E's ability to deliver electricity. Where are we with a project like this? Does it help? And does it help immediately?
Yes, so projects with this, as we said, we have to do the CSER study and work with RG&E, and part of that is requiring upgrades to both the grid and the substation, which in Henrietta, for example, a few of our projects and their upgrades are allowing development that was halted due to.
Capacity issues, yeah.
Yeah, due to utility issues. So we, so this project will, we will pay for upgrades to the substation, which can then be used by other development or homes.
So that's really a net to the entire community.
Sir, you got to confine your questions to the board.
I'm sorry.
If you have some, some other things that you'd like to know, you can reach out to the planning department and, you know, they'll, they'll get some answers for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the, yes, come on up?
Sorry, I didn't plan on talking Julie right. 1997 Salt Road, just, just questions to the board, and I've never done this, I'm sorry. My husband was born in Penfield, all my kids have been raised in Penfield. We moved to Salt Road for the agricultural. We're part of the farmland along with the Roffess Farm that backs up very close to the Harris Road subdivision. It's extremely wet up there. If, I would like to make sure we do an environmental study, because if you start redirecting the water, it's going to come down into my crops. I have 20 acres of crops that Woodward farms for me. I have horses, and it's already wet, and this would have a negative impact on my property. The other thing is, I back up to the irrigation ditch, you guys have been great about maintaining it, but it's tough for you guys to maintain, and this would add extra pressure on that irrigation ditch that my property, that's right on my property. And then, I don't understand bonding and who benefits from this, so if you guys, we just got the notice two days ago, so I haven't had a chance to prepare, but I would love to know more about this. And I don't understand the bonding and who actually benefits from putting something like this in. It makes sense on land you can't use, but this is beautiful agricultural land that the town uses, and it's very close to your Sherwood Forest. It could so easily be connected and appreciated by the whole town rather than just, and put something on a different area that's unusable, like, like refilled land, land that's been filled with garbage type of things. Is that, is that okay?
You can say almost anything you want. Not anything, but almost. Okay, would anyone else like to speak? All right, I do have an electronic submission from.
Get another hand up.
Oh, yeah.
Did we talk about the bonding that she asked the question about? Do you want me to come up here?
Yeah, please. As far as bonding, are you talking about, like a performance bond?
Yes.
That's.
The performance bond is on the, you're going to have one for the project, right?
Yes, as part of the decommissioning plan, they require to upfront funds that will cover the maintenance and decommissioning of the project. We do require, it's part of our decommissioning plan, that they have to provide updates to the funding and escalate the funding as time goes on, so that it's, you know, 20 years, $1, 20 years from now is worth less than $1 now, so that it has to be indexed to provide enough funding to cover, fully cover the decommissioning. If something were to happen, the town would assume those funds and manage the decommissioning.
Okay, and now, with the real enough bonding, looked ahead in case the panels, some panels broke, the cadmium and lead land going to leach into the field, and now you've got a brown field that you've got to clean up.
That's covered in the decommissioning plan.
You're going to have enough money for that?
They're required to provide funds for that, yes.
Okay.
We do have one electronic submission from Aaron Roy, 9 Jemanda Way, and says, although I want to say that I support the utilization of solar power within Penfield. That being said, there are areas of concern that need to be balanced. At its core, these projects are corporate-owned and operated power plants which are being built within residential laborhoods. The designs proposed do not allow for adequate setback from neighboring properties or set any standards for screening from residential properties. The project in particular proposes the construction of private access road, not a residential driveway, immediately adjacent to neighboring residential properties. Even if these individual landowners consent to this, it is not a practice that should become standardized. The town code requires 50-foot setback for the solar project. The setback should be absolutely, should absolutely include all roadways that are being built as part of the project, considering that they are not residential driveways and will provide access only to commercial traffic and construction vehicles. Okay, so that's made part of the record. Thank you for that input. Would anyone else, any questions additional from the board? Anyone else in the audience? All right, yes, come on up.
Related to the bonding, so this proposed project is in a LLC, a separate LLC related directly to this project. Green Spark states that it's their project, they're going to maintain it, they own it, they, it are, is the bondage going to be in Green Spark company's name, or this entity that was formed just for this project? Because we see this all the time, they form LLCs, the bondage is in the LLC's name, LLC, you can walk away from LLC any day of the week, and the bondage is useless. So, is it related directly to Green Spark, since they state that that's, this is their project, they own it, they, it's them? Or is it this random LLC that was created? I guess is a good question that should be considered.
Sure, thank you, and it will be. Okay, thank you all for coming, very good feedback. We will be tabling this application this evening, and preparing a memo, a tabling resolution that will go out in the next week or so, for listing a number of items that we'd like addressed, I guess.
Of course.
So with that, we will call this hearing closed, and everyone have a good weekend.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for the thoughtful questions.
All right, Brian, we're going to go to the work session.
So, we will be, we still have a little bit of business going through to vote on tabling and so forth, so if, feel free to hang out in the hallway. You're welcome to watch us still, but if you'd like to, if you'd like to have conversations, if you could please take them to the room outside.
Excuse me, members, excuse me, in the gallery, the audience?
Yes, yes.
We're continuing our meeting.
We've got some business to do.
We're just trying to finish up our business here, so if.
Do you want to start with Harris or North Road?
Let's start with North Road.
Okay.
So I wrote down a number of concerns that the public brought up, and so I'd like a lot of those to be, you know, at least included in the tabling resolution. I can give you my notes.
Yep, so we can ask, I know some of them is, I mean, we could ask what the agricultural fencing is, have them provide examples or details for ag fencing.
I've got, I've got two pages of notes, just that North Road, so.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is we gather the.
I'd like to give them to you.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't necessarily have to go over every note right now.
Yeah, we're not going to solve these tonight.
Yep.
I'll hand in mine if everybody on the board can hand in their notes, and then we hit a resolution that we can consider at the work session. So.
So moved? Resolution with.
Are we still live?
Yes.
Comments? So Doug?
To begin prepar.
Wes, are we still recording?
We should be.
Brian, I think we should be, Brian.
I got a red light on the camera.
Okay, okay, I didn't see the box, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
So, yeah, we want to make a motion to begin preparation of the tabling resolution.
Yeah, so moved.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Quickly, before we move off of this, I just do want to update the board. So, in May, we brought it up to you guys, had you guys state your intent to be lead agency. We did send around notices to all involved agencies. The ones we heard back from, we did provide the comments to you in your drop. I believe it was Mono County Planning handled all of the county departments. I know they've had separate conversations with DOT and Mono County Water Authority, so we did provide those comments for you. Nobody objected to the planning board acting as lead agency. So if you guys are comfortable, you can be lead, I don't believe a vote's required to declare lead agency since we've already voiced our intent, but nobody's objected, so the board can be lead agency for Seeker for the review.
So we are officially the lead agency?
Correct.
Okay. Harris Road, similar? Gather our notes.
Yep. For this one, we do, we have not started Seeker or the lead agency process, so for that one, if the board is comfortable voting to declare its intent to serve as lead agency, we'll start the 30-day process to notify all involved and interested agencies. I believe we do need a simple vote for that.
Yeah, we should vote on that.
I'll make the motion, yes.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, then let's, somebody, Terry, maybe move to table the, the application while we prepare a tabling resolution.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, anything else?
That's all we have.
All right, we will adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. Have a good weekend. See you next meeting.
Okay, Michelle, did you bring some big rubber bands?
I did it.
I thought they read something about the bond in this part of code.
It's in the, it's in the design standards, that way if we.